And where it's sometimes during the year, if there was a cash flow difference in the funds, some funds ruled out to cover that, but then they had to be put back into the fund at the end of the year. And I believe you recall, last year, Mr. Bates had mentioned in the street lighting fund that there was no shortfall in the, didn't budget enough to cover expenses for tonight, but he had to borrow that money from this what we call TANF fund and then to put them back. So that that's a part of the general fund. And I guess the next ONG moment was when I heard that since this general fund can be used for anything you want. Don't go there. Don't think about that. Because we do need those monies now to carry the burrow over until the real estate taxes start to come in in April. So you need to find out what happened to the $100,000 that I'm thinking it was used to cover what I'm going to call sure funds for deficit. So I just want to share with you, if you can clarify that for me?
I name round, but the fund balance could be 392,000.
Okay, that's a big round, okay. But would you understand where I went?
Yeah, the more I think about it, I think it's around 392. And just to clarify, what you just said is the board, the council itself put a restriction on it. So it's a self-designated restriction, okay? So yes, they have to obviously abide by their self-restriction. But why I'm saying it's part of the general fund is because it doesn't have a restriction from the outside.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
No more R D M's. Heard a lot tonight about sanitation and I looked at the final financial report for 2015. And I guess this type of reporting is different from what you do in looking at audits. And if you took that 300,000 or the 300 figure was the TANF money, out of the calculation for where we were in the general fund, I think it would not be quite such a rosy picture. I mean, if you spend more money, you have to spend it somewhere. There's bills had to be paid, the labor had to be paid. And I've seen in the past, you know, temporary loan from, well, you pay that too. You move money because you have to get things paid. But if something's moved out of an area that needs to go back, then in the next budget year, you're going to have to account for that in your budget, on the revenues you bring in to get that money back into its right places. So I go with my trash bill increased any more than anybody else, be whatever age, seniors. But I can understand where we were. The budget for 2015 for sanitation was 1,073,056.99. The actual revenue that came in was 956,442.548 cents. There are four lines in your revenue. It's probably why it's hard to match all up because you don't always add them up. You've got your current trash fee, your prior year trash fee. There's a sort of commercial recycling fee and there's a small item, this light isn't just only two, three thousand dollars. The expenditure budget was 1,094.99, but the actual expenditures were 1,116.563. You subtract the expenditures from the actual money that came in for revenue for sanitation, and it was a minus 117,126.56. So you can see that was a problem at the end of 2015. That all happened before Mr. Sookie came. That wasn't, you don't know the actuals when you're doing your budget. The budget difference was short, partly in front of what's already been explained before.
Hey, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the council did have actuals when they reviewed the budget this year.
For this year, right. But I'm talking about when you're doing the budget for 2016, you don't have the finals in February. So Mr. Bates is still here and you were doing the budget, you didn't know all that. But you're pleading your case.
Oh, it's like, go on.
I don't like it, but you know, you look at the figures. And I do have to say, looking at the expenditure report through September, you're, for sanitation, you have held the line. I think it's maybe what, 16 or 20 grand under. So you are close to what was budgeted this year. I think for sure it falls like 24, but anyway. There is this problem of 2015 that you and this current council inherited, where monies were overspent beyond the revenues that came in and the bills had to be paid. So trying to make that up this year. The expenditure line, if anybody wants to look at the budget for 2016 or the finals, it tells you all the lines of salaries and interest and related cost, loaded costs, the insurances and health coverage and everything for that worker's time is a lot of disanitation. There is a lot, it's legitimate charges. They are things we have to do for sanitation that are over and above the actual contract of the trash hauler. As I recall, their bids came in considerably lower than the next lowest bidder, and then encompassed over the five-year contract. So we're hoping when you get this financial mess straightened out, which I think you've done a lot to do so far this year, and maybe next year when you figure, you know, you've got all the costs accounted, maybe the trash work can be done a little bit. But my point, avoiding people with these numbers, I'm sorry, is to show that this whole problem came with the 2015 budget and the expenditures and the shortfalls. And I guess the next thing I'll be looking at is to see where those shortfalls were paid from in the funds and to make sure everything gets back to where it needs to be. Because that TAN needs to be there for TAN. You have on the agenda still tonight the ordinance regarding sanitation. And I don't know, is that wording the same as what was advertised?
Yes.
Okay, this changed, it would have to be different. I guess the wording on the draft, agenda on the agenda tonight, basically talks about this ordinance for the purpose of including the fee, yada, 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 on the annual real estate tax bill. You pass this ordinance tonight, it will be confirmed for the residents that the trash ball next year will be 289 dollars. Even though you will not have yet passed your preliminary budget. I would have preferred to see this way until you at least gotten that step. Looking at the borough code from the state in your own court, and as you mentioned something to someone today this evening, that the state law doesn't require us in an ordinance to put the annual sanitation fee. Years ago, all our ordinance had the fees in. And as we became aware of things, we started taking the actual dollar amount out of the ordinances. And they say the ordinance had the fee, we return in an annual fee schedule, not a government or the borough council. This ordinance is on the agenda for tonight. It's a little bit late to change that wording. And I'm sorry I didn't realize that, I couldn't finish my research until after, Tuesday evening last week. But to look for next year to get this out of the ordinance. I had been counsel for many years and I had mistaken notion that the state law required for sanitation that you put that in an ordinance. Since that's something internal, I thought our ordinance essentially established a fee. So we can change wording and next year you won't have to do the ordinance every year that is solely through the purpose of setting what the fees for sanitation and include recycling and that. Thank you. Do you want to you all to look at your budget?
King James?
Yes, yes.
I'll just say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And lastly, we have Bill Farrell, perhaps last, last of the ones.
Bill Farrell, 347th York Councilor. First thing first. I went online to get these things and I got this, okay? I spent more time on there than I want to. Before, it used to be fairly easy to go to what's new and it gave me that. I had to spend extra 20 minutes and I'm not happy about that. And if you look at this one, this one has like 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D. This one here's got 7A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. No A, B, Cs, or Ts. I don't know. I'm not happy. I was happy with the other way, but this system here seems to be different. I took time, I had to spend time. And I don't like sitting at a desk, looking at something that thinks is smarter than I am. So maybe we can do some, the gentleman spoke about the audit. I was, I was here and I spoke numerous times about the controller. I wasn't happy when it left, when it was taken out of here, I voted it out. But I have a couple of questions. Do you get bills from the borough every month to look over, to check and see if this, or do they give them to you all at one time?
I, I select the sample and I select it at all once.
So in other words, you do it every year, right?
Since I've been doing DCAD, yes.
Okay. Well, the purpose of the controller was to look at the bills. And if there's any problems, I would write the file. But that, he would get the bills monthly. Now you're going to go a year and you get all this together. Like I said, I'm not happy with what occurred. And I said it numerous times, but I elude it. You also mentioned about you had four or five different funds that could be combined into one. Is that your recommendation to the borough? Or do you have to follow it or not?
Uh, no. They can have five different funds.
Well, that's your old problem. I have a left pocket and a right pocket. My monies are my left, my keys are my right. I don't put my keys on my left, I put my money on my right. Because I know where my money is and I know where my keys are. But it seems like what's going on is we're taking money from here, putting it over there. Taking money from here and putting it over there. I know the general fund's your main body you draw from, but it's crazy. In a way, so like you were talking about this administration for the garbage. Well, that should be, like you said, put it back where it was before. Because you had, you paid it, but you didn't pay it from where it had been for 20 years. You paid it from the general fund. I hope you straighten it out. Because I'm sure the people in Marsville don't have any idea what's going on. Uh-huh. Is the budget going to be ready in time this year? It hasn't been ready for a few years, like Wolfie in June last year.
Mr. Farrell, tomorrow is our last budget meeting and I'm confident that it will be voted on in time as such as last year.
Okay, great, because I remember a couple of years later in February and beyond, and that's sad.
I think we've always had it passed by the New Year.
Huh?
We've always had it passed by the New Year.
Yeah, you were voting on New Year's Eve.
It was only after the mayor beat it.
I just said, you were voting on New Year's Eve, which is asinine. Okay, the other thing is, how's the garbage, not the collection, the collection of the money from the garbage coming? Is there any update or are we just in hoo-ha?
Are you referring to previous sanitation?
Yeah.
Previous sanitation?
Like the 700 grand and so.
Well, we met our obligation to last year's budget by bringing in what we budgeted for, for prior year sanitation. However, we're looking at for a large increase on prior year sanitation coming in 2017.
Is that from the people here or from the people that are in the waiting room?
It was the people we hired to make the collection of going for sanitation.
Okay. Well, everybody have a great Thanksgiving and don't get too much startings.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else in the audience like to add to public comment? And we will begin with our reports.
Your answer.
Oh, sorry, good catch, I was on the back page, sorry. We go into six group of minutes, we have one, the regular Borough Council meeting of October 16, 2016. May I have him up?
So moved.
Corinne, second?
Second.
Danielle, any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote. Question passes eight zero. Now we can move on to the reports, starting with 7A, the manager's report.
Budget season, the only thing, I have been working and attending several meetings with the county on behalf of the MR writer, most of my time has been basically on getting the budget out on time.
Well, so let's report.
No separate reports, no engineer, resident.
Thank you. No engineer, mayor, would you like to give a report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Earlier this month, our department, along with other first responders, had the pleasure of being invited to a special Sunday service of appreciation by Pastor Mario here in Marsville. I want to thank Pastor Mario and his congregation for their overwhelming support from the Marsville Police Department. I'd like to congratulate the Marsville Senior Center on their fortieth year in the community. Along with the council members, I had the pleasure of attending the anniversary dinner. I presented them with a proclamation of their great achievement. I understand there was recently a vacant property review board meeting. And I hope that moving forward, on one of these meetings is called, the chairperson will let the entire committee notify, I'd like to see that memo, notifying all of us, what's going to occur. We are currently planning the 2016 Santa Falls event. That will be Sunday, December 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Marsville Angler Squad, 139 North Washington Street. A $3 donation is being asked for each sitting with all proceeds donated to the squad. There's no need to register, just stop by with your pet and quote a payment. Also, I was able to attend recently the Marsville zoning hearing board meeting with the subject being the old Pan American Club property. Since then, I've heard some incorrect information floating around, so I want to address them this evening. Specifically, I want to make sure people realize that despite what you may have heard of that, the property is not being removed in the tax rolls. So that concern is not necessarily testimony that they are not removing it. Also want to congratulate Nick Liston on the team to rank the Eagle Scout. You may recall his project, and he had worked on building 20 sets of barricades for the Marsville Police Department. And I honestly, I want to make sure people realize I've been working with Star Tours on job opportunities for our community. So if anyone likes some more information about possibly getting a job with Star Tours, feel free to contact me or you can also go right through starwars.com for more information. Let us know whatever.
Do you ever try to pass that down for minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. Police chief is here and we are ready for your report.
Hey, Jess. Everybody has a crime number for this month. We are steadily getting better. Remember back in, back in May, we were about 23%. In May, we were, are, a increase in crime of 23%, we're now down to 21%. I'm hoping that will continue for the rest of the year. We had a party to arrest this past month, one being a robbery on Crown Street. We quickly apprehended the male who did the robbery, the public stuff. Budget-wise, as council knows, I just want to see what public does know, the police department has come in under budget again for the third year. We're well under $150,000 in black, which ends up going back to the rest of the budget. Which concerns be done in the future. We need to really work with this budget and work on some revenue sources. My budget is about 9% wages, personnel, and insurance. And when it runs to zero, if it's 100%, we're going to start to have some issues. So we really need to look at this budget to really get it documented and launch some revenue sources. And we can say thank you.
Chief, and we move on to 7F, the inaugural report of our junior councilperson, Garlee St. Seer.
Hi, Adam. He talked about the budget meeting, but it wasn't on budget, so. Hope this is great.
Oh, he's great.
Hi, everyone, nice to meet you. My name is Garlee St. Seer as a junior report. I'd like to thank you for electing me as your 2017, 2018 year councilperson. And I'm looking forward to these meetings for us in the future. So there's a lot of things going on at our school that as well, beginning of the year, hopefully. Our choir has been singing at the 149th Memphis Church. They have an event there. They said it's not a religious, a religious thing, they just, they're doing it like the church accepts any choirs or singing groups, so they decided to have it up there. Our National Honor Society has been collecting codes of other winter items through our Operation Warm Heart. And we, we started donating since the beginning of October and now we're nearing the end at the end of November. Our FBLA club, which is featured Business Series of America, is preparing for test play. We have competition, I think, at the end of November as well. For fundraising for that club, we've done the alch brands, sold them at 50 cents a piece. For reading sports exercise, which is a girls' club, we read every Wednesday after school with our English teacher, Miss Bramble. We read classical literature and the first book that we started with is Little People. My chief's here. Our Reading Lickets is gearing up for competition. Last year, they won it in the second percentile, so now they're going for the first percentile. We have football games coming up on that previously mentioned. We have our big game at 10:00 a.m. We have a program that we've been doing for a couple of years now, it's called Student Forum. And that's with Bucks County Intermediate Unit. And it's with two juniors and two seniors, I have one of them. And we go to, each of us, we go to a different school in the county. So last, last month, they go into the Shandown High School. And we're doing, we break up into subcommittees and we talk about certain problems within our youth. So like my group, in particular, is gambling. And there's others like suicide prevention and alcohol abuse, alcohol and drug abuse. Recently, we had a 21st Century sponsor college trip to East Dockberg today. I had a shirt, but I forgot it. We had this big game for shores and, and that was today. It was a really nice time. And we also have another trip coming up on December 8th to Penn State Berks, Kansas. And that's another route that we'll be going there. Our bowling team is starting up, they received their physicals that they're just kind of, you know, before last year. And last year, our basketball trials and workouts have finished. So now our varsity and junior varsity teams have been hosting and they're working on their spirituals for Saturday.
Great. One question before you go. If we have codes, where should we pay?
What?
You said the National Honor Society is liking codes?
Yeah.
And if we wanted to contribute, how would we do that?
You could go to the front office in our school, you could talk to the analysis department, that's the society as well. And you could also talk to Mrs. Bramble, she's, her home is C. 17, no, C. 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our reports and moves us on to finance. 8A, we have the motion to pay the bills. Mr. Sookie, would you read the bills, please?
General fund, 102,402.02. Street lighting fund, 2,877.90. Library fund, 3,688.81. Rec fund, 2,447.31. Sinking fund, 2,948.85. The street fund, 2,326.10. EMS fund, 195. The state highway fund, 1,279.93. Ex-officer Tom Chough, officer Popeyes, is 774.23. And Precision Contractors was 1,029.67 for a total of 119,962.75. Since the last meeting, 120,030.16 for a grand total of 239,992.91.
May I have a motion to pay those bills?
So moved. Second.
Corinne and Debbie, any questions or comments on those bills? No objections this time, God, I'm impressed.
That's okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes eight zero. We have a motion to award the 2016-17 consortium salt bid as bid for the Bucks County Consortium to Morton Salt Incorporated for the bid price of $56.13 price per ton delivered and a $56 price per ton underlived. Contract to run through December 30th or September 30th, 2017. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Wait, wait. Is that Bill?
No.
There's Corinne?
I know, my voice is scratched with cheese.
Was that getting said that night?
Yeah.
It was big.
Not that time.
It was touched.
So we have Corinne and Todd making a motion. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes eight zero. 8C, we have a motion to pass the ordinance to include the fee for the removal of garbage and refuse within Marsville Borough for the year 2017 on the annual real estate tax bill. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Corinne? Anyone interested in seconding that motion?
Second.
Is it ten? Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, this motion, is it going to have the fee written into it? The amount written into it?
The one that I have does have the amount.
Read it, read it, that's what I'm saying. The actual motion.
Oh, with the motion?
Yeah, they're not filling it in there?
Do we need to? No.
No? Okay. The 289.25. Mr. Sookie, you decided that amount? It wasn't something the account or the side note was already given to us?
No, I did not decide that amount. What it was, was it was based off of previous years and what the administrative side was. However, this year, our employees receive a 3%. So what we previously budgeted each year for sanitation with an increase in salaries of 3% and we averaged a 10% for our insurances. Besides that, it was cut dry. No will of extra funding available, it's what we have to pay out.
So you're telling me that this fee right here is for sanitation only, has nothing to do with the shores that we send the water area where it was over and salaries that we pay for that one?
No, it has nothing to do with the budget.
So that's going to be, you'll be able to explain that tomorrow as to where that was paid for and not paid for that shortage?
Well, hopefully, since we aggressively brought in a company to do our prior year sanitation, where we have about $800,000 that is on the street. This company is projecting that we bring in revenues that exceed what we have this year. And they actually said that they believe that 70%, 70% return on our prior fees. If that turns out to be true, sanitation could go down next year.
Okay. I'm confused, I was thinking about the other shores we had, that stopped being, you're not waiting for funds to come in next year and 2017 months for sanitation for that quarter, is what I'm saying. You were saying that part we had to take care of this year because that was also from previous 2015?
Well, it was added into the budget.
And this year's budget?
For now, for 2017. We started off with a deficit.
Right, that adds around to that. This amount here is only for the part of the sanitation that was not taken care of, but that they need to be put back in.
That is, no, that will not be used, that is only for sanitation.
Right.
And since, sorry, since we don't have that in the motion, the dollar amount, I move that we just remove the dollar amount from this motion and say to be determined in our fees given.
Okay.
Since we have to decide on the budget until tomorrow.
Okay, so you're saying in here in the ordinance, you're going to remove this 289. Okay, so you're saying in here, in the ordinance, you're going to remove this two eighty-nine twenty-five?
Right.
Because that's what you advertised and paid for the people.
Aye, it says a fee in the amount of two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents per year for a residence residential unit in place of business situated in the Borough of Marshall, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, is hereby imposed for the calendar year twenty seventeen. I would just change that to say a fee to be determined.
What did you advertise?
Two eighty-nine twenty-five.
And I just like, yeah, and I like to make the comment, right? And I think, um, um, all our departments heads will confirm what I'm saying. Everything in our budget that we had was to the final penny. I did not put extra funds to be allocated for no other departments, no other funds, except for what we needed. I truly believe with the budget, what we tried to allocate from our findings from the previous years, we're taking in consideration for our future budget, the two seventeen. Um, the dollar amount in our budget is less than the two sixteen budget, with counting the figures of lost sanitation, which I get committed into the budget. That's not the motion.
Right.
That's not the motion, let's vote on the motion.
That's one about voting on, so you're, you're saying he can't take that number out of it, that's what I'm saying?
I have to vote on what you advertise.
We didn't advertise it.
You didn't advertise it?
We did.
You did, did you advertise it with the two eighty-nine in it?
Yes, yes.
Then you have to vote on the two eighty-nine.
So, we're locked in this two eighty-nine to find out what kind of budget?
If all the council had an opportunity to review the sanitation, when, when we, last week, we had two areas of the budget that we needed to address, um, sanitation, mother one.
If you want to remove the fee specifically from this ordinance, and change it to a fee in, in an amount to be established by resolution of council, which may be amended from time to time by council, uh, you'd have to re-advertise this ordinance. So if you want to vote on an ordinance tonight, it's going to say two eighty-nine twenty-five. If you want to direct our office to amend the ordinance and re-advertise it, uh, we can do that for your next public meeting. However, um, you're also going to have to amend your fee schedule to include a specific fee when the fee is arriving.
And as I stated, the council members had the ability to look at sanitation, and again, there was no added amounts to sanitation, only what was needed to house the sanitation budget.
I'm comfortable with the amount.
So you're saying, I mean, there's, there's no reason to believe that this amount won't change anyway? It can't go up because it has to be, um, what we charge has to be paid for sanitation. It has to be charged, so the, the amount should be, okay, the amount should already have been arrived at, because it's the separate.
I feel confident with the page we did on sanitation.
Right.
Again, I'd just like to make another comment about this, this has been an issue for over ten years, sanitation. There was a gentleman who was a part of, uh, um, the appointments in the, on Marshall Borough that made statement in paper about the sanitation, that for years, this has been an issue. We're resolving this issue, and moving forward, making sure that not only prior years are taken care of, but moving forward, that the borough does not, um, end up having costs without, or funds, without having the cost related to the price itself. So again, in the budget, everything was based off of the amount that is needed for this. There wasn't a penny added to sanitation, to, which you're not even allowed to make. So, again, this is the amount that, when we finished the budget line, that was the dollar figure, we base it off that, that was it. There's nothing, nothing, no money that's in there goes anywhere but for sanitation. And prior year sanitation actually will stay in sanitation. So, moving forward again, like I said, if we're successful in moving forward, hopefully next year, we will have more sanitation goals. If you don't move forward, then you miss the opportunity, um, possibly could affect future revenues.
Any questions and comments? Andrew? There was not a question yet.
All I was asking was, this amount that we had, from what we had in our discussions or in budget, budget meetings, does not include any other amounts that we short adjust? It's only sanitation. So then, I, so I'm saying, so then tomorrow, you will show me how you paid what was short in another fund.
Well, Mrs. Smith, the sanitation is part of the general fund.
I know.
Okay, so, um, we have a budgeted line for sanitation. If you look at your financial reports, every month, you have a sanitation line. It will say prior years and revenues that were all in from sanitation. If you notice this year, the amount that's owed is under, well, it will meet the amount to pay the sanitation, but won't pay the borough side. So, in retrospect, that by keeping the funds in the sanitation, hopefully by being aggressive and going out, getting the cash years, it should all, um, stay within the fund and pay for all future costs. The two eighty-nine has nothing to do with the amount of the deficit in the budget.
You have a vote, Paul? Oh, Paul, that's all right.
Mr. Sisro?
Yes.
Mr. Kerner?
Yes.
Ms. Cronicle?
Yes.
Ms. Larison?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone?
No.
Mr. Sanford?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Do we have a tie? Do we actually have a mayor?
Well, if you don't break it, I believe you have to schedule a meeting. I understand that. You do have sixty days from the date of the first advertising, because it's only been advertised once, uh, of the ordinance to take action on it, so you don't have to re-advertise, but the matter would have to be tabled and then brought up, uh, tomorrow's meeting.
Well, we can table it at a time.
Well, it's got to be.
The mayor's handle?
The, the, I'll read it from the Borough Code itself. If by reason of a tie or split vote, the council shall be unable to, uh, in this case, uh, pass an ordinance, the mayor, if in attendance at the meeting, may, at the mayor's option, cast a deciding vote, or shall direct that the matter be tabled until a special meeting of council. The special meeting of council shall be held within not less than five days, so it can't be tomorrow night, nor more than ten days, uh, at which time the matter shall be reconsidered by council. If there's still a tie vote that exists at this special meeting, it shall be the duty of the mayor at that time to cast the deciding vote.
Motion fails. Report form, may I break in the time, maybe? Have you no unfinished business, we move on to ten, new business, starting with ten A, a motion to pass the resolution adopting the Bucks County Twenty Sixteen Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official hazard mitigation plan of the Borough of Marshall. May I have a motion?
Some votes.
Corinne and Ted, Todd? Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. We have ten B, a motion to pass the application resolution for the Bucks County Municipal Open Space Program, approving filing of an application for funds under the Municipal Space Program, Municipal Open Space Program. May I have a motion?
Some votes.
Second.
Corinne? Danielle, any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes eight zero. And we have ten C, which, is we, we this? I'm going to remove ten C from the agenda, because I believe this is what we voted on at our budget meeting the other night. That's the last thing on our agenda, which moves us into eleven, Borough officials?
Yeah, let me just really quickly, um, I think I was touched on briefly, but I just want to reiterate that it's Thanksgiving, um, due to we will have the breakfast at the high school, and our home game, our game is home this year, um, versus, versus also, um, I think the breakfast starts at seven, and
That's celebrate to me as well.
And I think the game starts at ten, so I hope everybody can come out and show your support.
Corinne? Anyone else?
Yes, this, um, coming Saturday at ten AM, the beautification committee, uh, will be down at, uh, Marshall Plaza, February, April, Christmas, so if anyone would like to join us, we will be there starting at ten AM.
Saturday, ten AM at the, uh, Marshall Plaza?
Yes.
Anyone else with anything?
I have two things. Um, the Bulldogs Pet, Pet Rally will be at the high school gym on Wednesday, November twenty-third, six PM. Um, then also on Black Friday, there's a jazz concert at the high school auditorium. At seven thirty, the price is fifteen dollars per person. It's professional musicians raising money for performing arts and arts.
What do you have here?
Black Friday, the web, uh, seven thirty.
Anyone else? Let us promote motion to adjourn.
Some votes.
Second.
Corinne and Ted? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.